Dr. Dennis, you're not excited about this, are you?
I'm excited about this.
And we, uh, sure.
Actually, what we're going to share with you tonight, did you already do consent, Senator?
Yes, we did.
Wow, you're fast.
Yeah, of all, we want to get that stuff out of the way so we can hear you and talk about Engage New York.
We are, our purpose tonight is not to really talk about Engage New York itself, but we wanted to touch base with you on the process that we're going to use to evaluate the progress we're making and the decision that we're going to make about where to move in the future. So, not a lot to be specific tonight about the program itself, but just to lay out the process that we intend to follow. As you, as I'm sure you know, at the end of last year, we had a committee, curriculum committee, that made the decision that we weren't ready to commit to a particular math program long-term yet. And so, we decided to do a one-year pilot of Engage New York, the one that, at that time, they felt like was the most aligned, with the idea that we would do an evaluation of it this year, specifically second semester, and then make a decision moving forward about what we would do. And so, there we go. The evaluation statement for this process and the committee that's been put together is up here on the board. The purpose is to determine the impact of Engage New York math program in preparing students with skills to be successful with college and career-ready standards. And really, there are three choices, and these are laid out in that last sentence. At the end of this process, we are going to make a recommendation for one of three things to happen. Either we'll continue the program as it is. Second option is continue the program but modify it, make some what we would consider program improvements, but use the existing program as the foundation of it. Or three, discontinue this and do something different. So, that is, those are the three choices that we have at this point. Several evaluation questions that the committee is looking at. The intent here, again, is to be thorough in our examination of the program and to make the best possible decision for our kids in our district. So, the committee's going to be trying to answer these questions. Does Engage New York align with college and career-ready standards? And again, we're not going to try to answer these for you tonight, but these are the questions the committee is going to be looking at, is in the process of looking at. Does the program provide students with skills to be successful with the new standards? Do students who've been taught using the Engage New York curriculum show improvement on assessments? Now, we don't really have state assessments to be able to compare at this point because of all the problems we had last year, but we do have some screening assessments that we've been able to pull some data on. And then, the final three deal with perceptions. How do teachers feel about it? How do students feel about it? And importantly, how do parents feel about it? We know that there have been some initial concerns. Have those been addressed? And where do we move forward from here? So, we've put together a team, a diverse team, and a rather large team. It includes principals, math coaches, instruction specialists, classroom teachers. Can't really see it on the back so well, but there is a parent on it as well. We would love to have more parents. We haven't been really successful in getting parents to be part of it, but we would love to have more parent involvement in this process as well. So, our pilot, coming into this year, we began with some professional development for teachers at the beginning of the year. We've had feedback on that professional development, and we feel like moving forward, whether it's this or something else, we've got some good feedback on what we would do differently in terms of getting teachers trained. Each teacher was provided with some materials, including the pacing documents, some manuals, and access to online resources, and some expectations about how those were used. And that, as you, I think you know as well, has changed over time as well, as there's been more flexibility with those documents. They've had ongoing support, but that support has varied according to where they are. Some buildings have math coaches, people whose job it is to work specifically with teachers to improve their math instruction. Some buildings do not have that resource, and so, we've been trying to buddy schools up so that if you don't have it, you have access to someone and you can get some support. But that's an area that we'd like to address moving forward, we know, in the future. K-4 teachers have been supporting each other through monthly grade-level meetings. At the upper levels, there have been PLC meetings specific to content if they're dealing with math.
This is probably one of the most comprehensive evaluations of a program that we've ever done. In order to answer the questions that Dr. Dennis talked about, we have, we've decided that the best way to gather that information is, one, through surveys, and we're currently doing three different surveys. One for parents, we hope to do that at parent-teacher conferences. One for teachers, which is currently open now and will close tomorrow, so we're anxious to see what the results are from teachers, because we've told them all year when they've given us some feedback, we're saying, you know, please fill out the survey because we really do want to know what you think. And we also want to see what students think, because we really want to know from parents, how has it worked with the homework? How have you seen your students grow in their math ability? And have you been able to access the resources that we've provided you, and have those been helpful to you? So, we're also looking at the assessments, like Dr. Dennis said. We don't have state assessments, and we know that oftentimes, in a year when you implement something, the first time you're going to see an implementation bid. And although AIMS Web probably isn't our best method to assess that, hopefully, we can see some foundation building with that assessment. We're also doing focus groups, and we have thoroughly enjoyed the focus groups. I think we've gotten some really good feedback from teachers, principals. We've done an elementary principal focus group, a secondary principal. We had a special education teacher, kindergarten to fourth-grade teacher group. We hope to get in and do some student focus groups and...
Still need, we're not done with them yet.
We're not finished with them, but the focus groups that we have conducted have been very informational for us. We're also doing a document study, looking at the alignment of what we're doing with Engage New York to the state standards. This is kind of our timeline that's kept us on track, and just taking a look at that, I think we're on track with our surveys, with our focus groups. The next thing we hope to do is get our entire committee back together, the entire math committee, on March 23rd, to really look at each one of these data pieces, put it all together, make sense of it, try to come to some kind of a finding as to what will be our recommendation, then take that to our district leadership team probably the next day, talk about the information, what that looks like, and we want a final recommendation from them, what they feel like we need to do, which we will then bring to you in April for, you know, your recommendation, having a look at that. But after that, then we want to make sure that we can take it back to our buildings, give them the information that they need to move forward next year, and get that out to parents in May so that we can make sure that our teachers have the information they need over the summertime to prepare for next year. So, the document that you have in front of you, I don't know if you guys have that. The one data piece that we are finished with is our document review, looking at the alignment of the math program to standards. Yeah, it looks like this. The rubric is from zero to two, zero meaning no evidence, one is kind of in the middle, two means it's going to be presented. If you look at that first page, as you guys presented the math standards last year at your conference, the shifts in the math were the focus, the coherence, and the rigor. You can see that as the math coaches looked at this, that was all ranked very high. The coherence was very high there. At the very bottom, it talks about student discourse, are students able to think and justify their answers, and again, the very highest level there, so that was a two. Going on through this, and I'm not going to, you can read this later, but everything really was rated at the very highest, so it shows that Engage New York is very much aligned to where the college and career-ready standards are. The very last page is the only page that we saw some places where it wasn't highly aligned, and the first one is differentiation, being able to differentiate that for the different student populations that we have. That was kind of ranked in the middle. Cross-curricular content, really, it's all about math. There's really not a lot of cross-curricular there, it was kind of rated in the middle. Providing multiple entry points for varying student needs. And I think that's going to happen when you implement standards across the board without incrementally implementing them at kindergarten, first grade. We implemented everything at once, and that was, that was a state decision. But there really is no way for somebody to come in and not have a gap. One of the things that we found in the focus groups, this came from a sixth-grade teacher, he said, what I like about the way that we have this, it's online, so that if I have a student who is maybe at a fourth-grade level and the rest of my kids are in the sixth-grade level, I can look back and I can see where they need to work and I can maybe fill in the gap that way. I don't have to go down to a fourth-grade teacher and try to find a textbook or something. So, he was appreciative of the online resources, but anyway. This is our document tool, and it shows that it is pretty good online, and what we're finding is that it's probably the most aligned of any of the programs on the market right now.
This is not a done decision. It's one that we're actively trying to gather information on to determine the best pick for us. Because it's not a done decision, we wanted to explore some other options, at least know what's out there. In the event that this is not the program we decide as a district that is the right path for us, there are some other options out there. Southwest Plains Regional Service Center held a math curriculum day about two weeks ago, and we sent a team down there to look at four additional programs. Trailblazers from Kendall Hunt, Investigations from Pearson, Go Math from Houghton Mifflin, and My Math from McGraw-Hill. So, there were, there were salespeople there, they had curriculum materials and samples there, and so, we were able to look at those in the event that this is not where we go, we've got some other options, and we have some time to look through and make some decisions. That's really what we wanted to share with you today. It's process, not conclusions yet, but we're going to come back to you after this process is through and a little further down the line to share our thinking and share what the data actually says.
We hope to have a really comprehensive report available for you to look at that will outline what our focus groups found, what our surveys said, so that you'll have the whole gamut.
Any questions for us at this point?
Have you any questions?
Yeah. Who completed this document?
The math coaches worked on that.
Well, we're talking about that document, you know, it looks great, other than the one thing that I think identifies our community needs, our multiple entry points for...
And differentiation.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh, that's just, ugh, if you could pick another zero, it would be, you know, I don't know, that's, that's my concern, but...
Yeah, I've been to a lot of staff meetings this year, and this seems to be a huge topic at the faculty meetings, and so many teachers are like, you know, this took, there was a huge learning curve on their part to accept this curriculum and to get on board and to learn what they had to learn in order to be an effective teacher, and, you know, a lot of them were, you know, maybe not so big supporters of it at the beginning, but now they are, and the ones that have done so much, most of them have done so much work to get where they are, and I think pulling the rug out from under them now would be, I mean, honestly, I, I, I think that would be scary to not adopt this curriculum after everything we've gone through, but you're the experts, and I hope the data supports that, because I'd hate to start it over.
We'll find out the teachers tomorrow.
Wow. The, the other piece of, you know, you're, you're going to get more data, and I think you can even mine, but all the power to you.
This is the, this is the most comprehensive process we've ever used, at least in my experience, with a particular program.
Are you going to weigh student achievement or student proficiency and performance? And, you know, some of that's got to be weighed heavier, because from a parent, I would be so frustrated, but every year's going to get better, and the more the teachers embrace this curriculum, the better the teacher-parent relationship will get better, but I think it all starts by that commitment level, which we can't offer yet. So, I have a feeling you're going to get some, some information from probably the parents that are going to say, you know, this is so foreign of what, how they were taught math and how they've been able to help their student children before. I, I just, I don't want that to be weighed against a good curriculum, because they too have a learning curve as parent.
This committee has a big job, a lot of information to learn.
I'm kind of curious about the makeup of this committee. Looking at it, it was, it, there were probably just as many coaches as there were teachers, and the majority of the coaches are not in the classroom, so I'm wondering why we didn't have more teacher involvement in the actual committee, because they're the ones in the trenches, having to deal with the parents, having to deal with the students, having to deal with this odd curriculum that they're having to deal with. It seems like they would, I don't know, I guess I'm just curious, it just seems like they would be the ones to talk to the most. I know you're doing the focus groups, but...
Well, and we're trying to make them understand that they are representing the views of the teachers in their building, so they're not just representing their views. So, we tell them every time they come in, make sure that you're speaking for your teachers, that you're not just speaking for yourself, so...
Part of the thinking, too, was they have some expertise in the math curriculum and instructional process, and they're working with teachers, so they're getting feedback from a lot of different people. Points we'll take in, though.
What's your hypothesis? What do you think's going to, what do you, what's your feeling on this? Or do you want to speak? And that's fair, if you don't want to answer that question.
I want to, I want to go into this as a fair evaluation...
Right.
And I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth. If I were guessing at this point, which is really what it would be...
That's all I'm asking.
I would say we're, this would be the likely choice to continue, but with modifications. What we heard from the focus groups we've had has been some specific ideas about how to strengthen the program where they see holes. So, I, I'm hearing, too, what you mentioned, which is, we put a lot of effort into this, and we're going to have to learn something completely different that might be tough. So, if I were guessing, I would say probably adopt, but with some modifications.
And if we do adopt, how often do we look at the math curriculum? I know you probably said that...
Seven years.
Every seven years, so that's a good standard, really owning this curriculum and making it ours.
But we want people to know that we don't have a line made up, and I've talked to textbook vendors, that they know that if we decide in the end that we need to look at something else, they're going to have to drive their stuff out here with them today, and they're willing to do that, so...
Jean, I just had a couple of questions. This, this past year, the current year, how much modification of any of the teachers been able to make to that, to maybe more address some issues that they're experiencing with the classroom, or is it more standardized this year?
We started out pretty standardized, including a pacing guide and wanting to keep up with a particular pace. What we discovered pretty quickly from feedback was that we weren't able to do that. Teachers weren't able to keep up with that pace, and they needed a little more flexibility. So, they are exercising more professional judgment now in how they implement and the pace at which they implement.
We try to maintain the fidelity as much as we can, and I know, I hear a lot that the fluency is not where it needs to be, but we've tried to not add a lot of things in right now, because we really want to know if that fluency is a problem or not with Engage New York, because if we decide to go with it and we need to fix the fluency, then we'll know that it was Engage New York and not something else they were trying to add to it, so we'll be able to fix that next year.
I, I think math is so important to, to many other things that students will be telling you to, but this is really important that we get the right program. But I'm also wondering, are we going to capture some data about ACT performance? You know, what happens after they've gone through using this program? How does it affect them in the future?
I don't know that we'll be able to capture a whole lot based on this year, because it caps with our pilot, Algebra One, so we won't have a lot of kids going on to ACT at this point. Down the line, we can certainly capture that kind of information.
I think the end product is what I'm really most interested in, to make sure that however we do it along the way, the better product is going to be, you know, students will really learn to use that process.
That's, that's exactly the, the concept that we're trying to, to get, get at with this process.
We might be saying that, but we're going to...
Absolutely, yeah, it's a long word.
Are you looking at potential modifications to allow better entry points for students that are...
We haven't been really specific, other than some feedback we've had from focus groups, don't know a lot yet about what those modifications would be. We've kind of talked a little bit about what they might be, but...
Is the vendor, is the vendor working on it, or do you...
Well, the vendor is really not, it's not a traditional company. It's not a publisher the way that McGraw-Hill or Houghton Mifflin is.
But we have heard, we have called Engage New York, and they have said that they are working on some differentiated pieces. Now, what that looks like, I don't know. The beauty of this is, everything's online, and we'll be able to access anything new, whereas if we would go with a traditional textbook, you know, we would have to wait seven years to buy another one, so...
There's some pretty creative teaching pieces here.
That's true.
Yes, ma'am.
It is intriguing, with all this work and the unprecedented evaluation process, that we're still sort of doing that without a system of quantifiable evaluation, and it's just unique, and I don't know whether AIMS Web, it really fits, but I think, as you were saying, you're hoping to get some valuable information, sort of subjectively, to at least measure proof.
AIMS Web's a screener, so it will give us a little bit of foundational information, but again, we're not going to be able to know if there's any kind of an implementation bid, which there sometimes is in that first year of implementation, so...
We talked about this thing in online system, but again, for a lot of our students, they, they don't have access to the computer and iPad, so it's my understanding they're printing out the pages that the students need. I suppose that's good, because everybody gets a clean page, but on the other hand, we are copying a lot of material that...
We're copying a lot of material. Algebra One, high school level, they're using the iPads, so no copies at that level, but below that, we're using a ton of copies. Now, the trade-off is, we don't buy a textbook, and the copies are however much they cost, but over the course of that seven years, as we calculated last year, it would probably still be cheaper to make the copies than to buy the hardback books. We are going through a lot of treats.
But would it be cheaper to provide an iPad or something that would continue? Would technology be, have any answer to that?
Some of the teachers are being very creative. They're using their smart boards that they have in the classroom to do some things for whole-class work, but as far as the technology, I don't know.
Nice, great question.
Yeah, this is really interesting to me, because even whether we go with Engage New York or not, it's really transitioning to a different way of learning, as we are going from having a textbook that every student had to have, really, sort of a halfway point with having a copy that's from online eventually, like the high schools, to just having it off the line.
At the high school where they have the iPads anyway, I mean, that's easy, that's going to save us some copies. Whether it's cheaper to buy the devices for this, probably not, but if there are other instructional uses we're going to use them for, then that would probably make more sense.
I'm sure teachers define these more.
I'm sure they do. They're very creative, isn't it?
And at the high school level, they replace textbooks for a number of classes.
Correct. Correct.
Any questions, please? In the, the conference that you said somebody attended, the people attended, and there were four different math, were any of those, I mean, any of them strike out and say, hey, that might be something we need to look at, or were they all just kind of...
We tried to use the same form, the one that you have...
The document?
The document study. We tried to, as they presented their program, to look at that alongside the presentation. So, there was none that we felt like, at least I felt like, scored as well on that. But again, you're, it depends on how effective the salesman was, too, in some cases.
Sure.
So, until we get samples and really dig through it, it's hard to say.
My other comment is on your evaluation team also. You know, at least every month, we have a school coming, and they always talk about their school engaging parents. And to see Troy Audrey, which I know he's well-known in our community, but I would rather see less coaches than more parents.
Love that one.
We've seen on Channel 21, parents doing presentations of Engage New York at their school, so I know there's parents out there that would probably be willing to help. Maybe use those coaches in your focus group along with the teachers that are giving input, so that the coaches are actually hearing that same input at the same time as you guys are. But I really think, as I hear schools talk about how they're working on and bringing parents in, I think we as a district office need to be doing the same thing, to have one parent on this whole evaluation team. Personally, I'd rather see more parents on it.
I agree with that.
Hopefully, you can, you can find somebody, but maybe there aren't any, but I don't know.
And Troy's a recent addition. We didn't have anybody for a while, but we would love to have more.
And he, he's well-known. I'm not saying he's a bad pick, I'm just saying...
No, Troy's been, I thought he's been a good job.
I'd like to see a parent on here, because I've seen him on Channel 21 doing an interview at the schools that their kids are going to, so I know there's parents out there that should leave in it.
Yeah.
I didn't think that you all capped that. I mean, if there's 10 more parents, we're adding 10 more spots to that.
We would love ten more parents, yeah. So, it's not cap a case.
And an, and an interest of teacher that's in the trenches would be entertained as well, correct? Okay. Kind of like what Laura mentioned, you know, the people that have the working knowledge of it to be on that interview.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on to new business. Dr. Aethers, time to talk about Senate Bill 171.
Senate Bill 171 is simply an act, you know, in the state legislature right now. As a matter of fact, I believe the legislature committee has set for discussing it either tomorrow. This bill, if it becomes law, would move elections for cities and school district officials to November of even number of years, and make the elections partisan beginning January 1, 2016. We're asking you this evening to consider a resolution in opposition of this bill. I think the proponents are promoting this bill primarily because it moves the election of school boards and the city commission, for example, to November. They feel like that they will get a better voter turnout. That may or may not be the case. I think there's at least two provocative reasons to support this resolution this evening. One is, it would make the election partisan. Currently, when you run for the school board, you run as a community member. You run as a patron. You run as a parent, or a grandparent, or a business owner, and you're representing the community collectively, not as a Republican, not as a Democrat, not as an independent, but as a patron or community member. This would work toward eliminating that. I think also, currently, the board is elected in April and doesn't take office till July. That's a good time to take office in July, because it's the beginning of our, building our budget, beginning of the budget cycle. And that new board takes ownership for that budget and actually passes that budget and approves it, and it's a living document, that that, that's a good time for them to start. With this bill, if it becomes law, you'd be elected in November and take office in January, in the middle of the budget year. There are other reasons to oppose this bill, and there are probably reasons to support the bill. And that's why it's being debated by the state legislature right now. I do know this, as of this morning, 124 school district board of educations have supported this resolution in opposition of this bill. I look after this evening for there to be close to 200 school districts that will oppose this bill becoming law. Our city commission is discussing this... I do know this, as of this morning, 124 school district board of educations have supported this resolution in opposition of this bill. I look after this evening for there to be close to 200 school districts that will oppose this bill becoming law. Our city commission is discussing this bill tomorrow and discussing passing this resolution tomorrow. I have Mayor Sessna with us this evening. Do you have a comment that you would like to make?
Forward, Madam Chair, good morning, members. Yes, the school, the city commission will be discussing a resolution tomorrow in opposition to Senate Bill 171. I requested that we have a resolution set forth on the agenda for tomorrow to oppose the bill. I did present testimony, written testimony to the Senate in their committee on February 10th opposing Senate Bill 171 in regards to really what Dr. Atha presented, where it would disrupt, where it'd be in November in a table of the terms of when we'd be setting budgets and everything, so it'd disrupt that. It would also make it more partisan, like Dr. Atha said. And it would really disrupt home rule as we see it right now. Where we have our home rule, it would create a, it would create more of a state-style type of government instead of a local type of ruling government. So, that was in my testimony that was presented to the Senate Committee on Ethics and Elections on February 10th. Again, we are looking tomorrow at a resolution opposing the Senate Bill 171 and we'll be discussing that during our commission meeting.
If you approve this resolution, it will be obviously signed by the president and it will be forwarded to KSB and they're tabulating all of these resolutions and this will be forwarded on to the state legislature. With that said, are there any questions or comments? And I know Laura, you've made some comments that were appropriate and accurate. If you care to address those, any of those receiving or not.
I think they've been amplified both yourself and Mayor Sessna. You know, some of the things that I was concerned about is for our students really, and having an entirely different philosophy coming in. I thought it was in December that they'd take office, but December or January, never. And then having a new board saying, oh, I don't like how we've done this particular budget, let's redo it in the middle of the year. How are teachers going to adjust to that? So, the other thing that, when I was researching before I made my comments to the telegram was that there's a, there's some evidence to show that the sort of lower ticket items, so to speak, on an election ballot are not actually voted upon. You know, does a voter turn the ballot over to read what's on page two? If it's a four-page document, are they looking at all four pages? Or are they going and saying, okay, this is who I want for president and governor, I'm done? And there are researches showing that after those bigger ticket items, the voter turnout, so to speak, is dramatically decreased. So, that was one of the things that I didn't, I don't believe I mentioned to the telegram, but showed up in my research to add to what Dr. Atha and Mayor Sessna had to say. So, you know, I'll be supporting our resolution tonight. I think leaving it as it is is best for our students and our teachers.
Laura, any other comments? I do also want to say I support this resolution. I think more than many other entities, schools and everyone in our community, they're important to our future, they're important to the families. And to disrupt school activities and the operation of schools by moving to a different time, I think is really problematic for the schools. I think that is a big issue. And I think it's especially aggravated in terms of our fiscal situation this year and in the next few years. We need as much stability as we can get and to have our board turn at an awkward time would cause more havoc. So, I do support this resolution. In addition to the types of situations that are brought up in the resolution, I think it's especially bad for us.
Just add on the partisan election, state employees might be able to run here along with federal employees.
And military personnel as well.
Right. And that was in there, but I noticed that the state employee wasn't listed as that, but that is a fact, so... Any other comments?
I'm in favor of the...
I approve that we approve the resolution as presented.
Motion by Laura, second by Mark. Any further discussion? All is in favor, signal by raising hand. Your name, motion carries. And the full text of the resolution will be in a minute's. Now, it's time to move on.